This meeting is now called to order. Sorry about that. The Longview Ballet Theater and Ballet West Two will present a magical retelling of Cinderella on March fourth to the sixth, 2022, at the Beltrar Center. Tonight, Hannah McCrory, Allison Reed, and Daisy Rodriguez with the Longview Ballet Theater will lead the prayer and pledge. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Dear God, thank you for this wonderful day and everything you've given us. I thank you for the lovely weather we've been having, and I thank you that for our national and local governments that are able to help us all have a happy and healthy existence. And I just thank you that we've all remained mostly safe and happy. Just continue to take care of us and bless us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ladies so much for coming and doing this for us tonight. It's always a pleasure to see young people in our midst and especially talented young people such as you all. Good luck on your performance. Look forward to seeing you all. Thank you so much. Tonight, in employee recognition, we're recognizing Noah Zapata. Noah Zapata joined the water purification team in June of 2016, and after over 20 years of Texas at Texas Eastman and six years of City of Longview Water Distribution Division, he's a proud graduate of Longview High School and enjoys spending time with his family and volunteering for various area organizations. During the winter storm of February 2021, Noah, his never give up attitude ensured the City of Longview's water quality and quantity continued to remain top notch. His tireless efforts, including helping maintenance perform emergency repairs on equipment, covering for fellow operators while schedules were shifted to accommodate weather conditions, and making quick decisions to accommodate the heavy demands on the water system. Noah did all this with no complaints and made sure that everyone knew they could call on him for any needs, even in spite of the circumstances. Noah has been awarded the Texas Water Utilities Association Operator of the Year for Water Systems Over 60,000 Population for 2021 for his exceptional efforts, not only during the winter storm, but also since the beginning of his tenure with the City of Longview. Noah, please come forward. Noah Zapata. Noah, we're sure proud to have you as an operator in the City of Longview. It means a ton to us that you do such a great job with such a wonderful attitude, and that never give up attitude really pulled us through at a time of really tough, tough transition. We were really struggling. But it's just so nice to have guys like you on our side, and I could use you at my office if you get tired of this gig. I got a place for you, okay? I need that never give up attitude anywhere we go. So thank you so much for sitting here with Longview. You're a good man. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good man. Good job, Noah.
We're now for our public safety updates. We'll start with Chief Boone. No, 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 sorry, Chief Boone. I keep doing this every night. Just one second. Citizen comment. I have some speaker cards, but three of you all want to speak during zoning, so I'll bring you up at zoning if needed, okay? We do have one speaker card for the citizen comment. Jeremiah Hunter.
Jeremiah Hunter, three fourteen East Front Island Drive. I was here to speak on item number nine, the fire pension board funding discussion. And I would rather speak now rather than at that time because I have other things to do with myself. I was watching the replay of last city council meeting with the report about the pension problems, and I learned a few things that I was not aware of. However, my concern was not reduced by hearing about some of the changes that have been involved with the pension fund, you know, how it's been funded and everything. And then, just with the very casual bringing up by multiple members of this council, by my count, the majority of you never have to face voters again, are just saying, oh, let's just consider a $60 million bond to fix this problem. A problem that's been known about for at least eight to 10 years, and anyone who's been paying attention to the economy and how public pension funds are all having problems, that's not news at all. That's been news for 15 to 20 years because the funding model is just completely outdated. So I'm here to urge the council to seek other ways to solve this problem than by putting forth another bond proposition. Everyone here likes to say, oh, we're here to make tough decisions. Well, how about we make tough decisions about reducing spending in other areas of our city budget in order to make up for the shortfalls, to fulfill promises that we've made to our public employees, and of course, our firefighters, chief among them, in importance to the public safety of our citizens. So these numbers that are being thrown around on a per annual basis could very easily, and yes, I mean that, very easily be found in other areas of the city budget because we spend so many millions of dollars per year on programs and costs that are not really essential functions of city government when we have obviously now a huge need to fix a very vital part of our city function, which is paying what we promised to our firefighters. So I'm urging the council to not pass a bond or to not propose the bond because everyone knows it'll pass if it's proposed, so don't even propose it. Come up with the solutions that will fix the problem without incurring many, many more millions of dollars in debt. The taxpayers are not an ATM to just come and get cash from whenever the city needs it. There's ways of doing this without passing even more debt. And just to be clear, I'm a former firefighter myself. I did a season of wildland firefighting, and I'm also a former volunteer firefighter before I ever moved to Longview. So nobody can sit here and go, oh, you don't know anything about that. You can't speak. No, actually, I speak from experience, so that's all I had to say. Just redirect city funds, make those hard choices.
I have no more citizen comment cards, so we'll now move on to public safety update. Chief Boone. Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee. This is something we've been working on for several months, and I'm very excited about this. It's a customer service technology for the Longview Police Department. Company we're going to use is SpiderTech or software program. And basically, what that allows us to do is kind of move into the 21st century and catch up with our Amazons and all the other companies that are out there where you order packages, what do you do? You get an update right away, correct? Lets you know where you stand. Then afterwards, you get a customer survey to see how well they performed and how satisfied you were. That's what we want to do at the Longview Police Department, and this will give us the ability to do so. SpiderTech will work on the backend of our computer aided dispatch system, and as soon as somebody calls in on specified types of calls, it will actually give them a message as you see up here on the screen. So the initial message will say, hello, you've contacted Longview Police Department. Thank you for calling us. We strive to provide citizens with excellent service. Please call our non-emergency number if you have any follow-up information, and if another emergency occurs, please call 911. And then if for some reason your call holds or continues to hold, you'll actually receive a follow-up message as well. And from beyond there, after the call is completed, we will then send you a text message, and this is both in English and Spanish, that will give you a link to a survey, and right there on your phone, you can do the survey. And there's just one sample question right there. Did you contact the Longview Police Department either by telephone or in person at the Longview Police Department lobby? But other questions that we have include, how satisfied were you with the officer? Was the response timely? And then those are multiple choice ones, and then we'll actually have a text box in there, so if you have some additional information to include, that'll give us that information. So if we're doing a great job, and that's what I want to hear, that's going to be great, and we want to know that. But if there's an area we need to improve on, we want to know that too, so that we can be, provide better customer service to our public.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
It says pre-selected. Is that like, they just randomly select, or do you know if they would be marked like, hey, this person was happy, send him a survey?
No, it's actually like in-progress type calls. We're not going to send that to them, especially with something traumatic going on.
Sure.
But more of your, if you have a call for service for something like, you know, citizen, you need advice, burglary that's already occurred, theft that's already occurred, credit card abuse, those types of things, that's where we want to get that feedback. But we also want to be sensitive to our victims as well.
So it does need some human input to just select those when it's appropriate?
And we've actually pre-chosen those, so from there, it's the system letting who gets one and who doesn't. But we actually, from there, we don't choose who does or who doesn't.
Got it.
Definitely not trying to jade it either which way.
Thank you.
So before I move on to the other party, are there any other questions on that side of it? We're always looking for some good officers, so whatever age you are, gender, ethnicity, if you want to just do a good job for the City of Longview and Longview Police Department, please come on down. We have vacancies right now, and we're looking for folks that want to be a part of something bigger than themselves, part of a team, and actually want to be the voice for the person that can't be a voice for themselves. So if you feel strongly about something like that, come join our team. There's the information right there on how to do so. And with that also, our public safety communications or dispatchers, we have vacancies there as well, and it's the same thing. These people, they're the lifelines, not just for the officers and the firefighters, but they're the lifelines to the community members that call in and need help. So definitely, definitely a very important job. Requirements are right there. Must be able to work any shift. Unfortunately, we're 24/7 operation, so I know that's not exciting to some people. But if you're a night owl, come on. High school GED is a requirement, and successfully passing the skills test, and there's some other steps you have to go through as well. Has the pay right there, starting at $16.40, but after you complete training, it goes up to $18, $11 an hour, and all of your training is paid while you're on the job. So again, police or dispatch, if you're interested in being part of a team, please apply. Y'all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief Boone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, Members of Council, Mr. McPhee. Thanks for the opportunity to give you an update of what's happened in the fire department since our last meeting. I'd like to express my gratitude to St. Mary's Catholic School. They allowed us to have some individual FaceTime with their students during a career day that they hosted out there. We had some really good exchange and interaction, and maybe trying to convince a few of their students about a future career at the Longview Fire Department. So we're always welcome to these opportunities, so if your school is going to host something like this, please reach out to us. We can't do this too much. So thanks to them again for allowing us in their doors. I want to give a quick, express my gratitude and appreciation to our facilities maintenance and fleet maintenance departments and public works. Ahead of the winter weather event that we experienced last week, they were going around all of our fire stations, making sure that our aprons were able to be approachable and trucks can get in and out of the fire stations by putting out the magnesium chloride pellets to melt the ice. And you know, several of our stations, there's some incline to get up into the station, so it just makes our responses a lot easier when they do that. They made sure that all of our facilities were buttoned down and ready. You know, fortunately, it didn't get that bad around here, but had it, I think we would have been very well prepared because of the work that they put in. And you know, one of our core values is teamwork and the ATOP philosophy, and as I was going around town in an emergency management role, just kind of assessing things, you know, in various spots, trouble spots that typically pop up around town, everywhere I saw them, their crews out working, especially at our fire stations, getting us ready. We can't do what we do without their help, and I certainly appreciate the work that they put into that. We have an upcoming retirement. Fire driver engineer Eddie Haywood has been with us in just a few, about another week, about 22 years. Eddie Haywood came to us after a three-year stint with the Gauston Fire Department and a seven-year stint with the Marshall Fire Department. So after 32 years in the fire service, he's decided to hang up his helmet and his boots and go on to other ventures, and we certainly wish him well, and appreciate the fine work that he's done for us in his time here. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Stillman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, excuse me. Mr. Carpenter.
Were any officers hurt in the accident?
No, sir. There were no injuries.
And the vehicle okay?
Yes, very fortunate. Sir.
Is the vehicle okay?
It's drivable. It's not as pretty as it used to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're now to consider an agenda. Any items council would like pulled off for separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now to zoning. We have a public hearing to hold to consider applications Z22-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, Members of Council, and Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a rezone for approximately 10 acres located at the corner of McCann Road and Wellington Lane. They are requesting a rezone from agriculture and planned development general retail to single-family for a proposed subdivision of about 37 lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Mr. John Whitehurst is here for questions if needed. Any questions or concerns? Ms. Choi or Mr. Whitehurst? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Look forward to the development. We're now to have a public hearing to hold to consider applications Z22-02. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone of approximately six acres located on Gilmer Road north of Jenny Street from single-family four to multifamily zoning district. The property owner does own the lot to the north that is already zoned multifamily. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi, or Tanner Terry who's here for questions if needed? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, public hearing held to consider applications S22-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for drive-through windows in that zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. This is located on West Loop 281, which is classified as a principal arterial roadway, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. They will be sharing a driveway with the adjacent property owners. The track directly to the east received a similar S U P for a restaurant with a drive-through window in 2017. Their request did come with stipulations, however, they shared a property line with a neighborhood to the south of them. This development will be approximately 174 feet away from the residential properties to the south. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
And this one's going to require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? We have no speakers on this zoning request.
Will the buffer still be there?
So their property line is going to be 174 feet away, and so this coffee shop will not share a property line with the adjacent residential.
Any other questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have a public hearing for a considered request filed by Eastman Credit Union. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to abandon a portion of a 15-foot wide water line utility easement located at 2002 West Loop 281. That's the location of the new Eastman Credit Union building. The applicant has relocated this water line to the frontage of Loop 281. The reason for the relocation is to accommodate their new building. All public utility companies, along with staff, has reviewed and signed off on the proposed abandonment. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. I do have a speaker card for Mr. Sam Moore who would like to speak. Mr. Moore?
Oh, Mr. I was here for Dutch Bros. I'm good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I filled it out incorrectly, but looking forward to coming to town.
Thank you so much. If that's all you got to say, come anytime. I'm so sorry. It said 8D, and I miss you. I'm so sorry about that. But you're welcome. I can open it back up if you need to, but you're past, so you're good. Yeah, go on. Okay. So is there any questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We now have a discussion. I'm going to discuss the fire pension study and consider calling a bond election. Mr. McPhee.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. At the last city council meeting, we heard a presentation from Hub International regarding the status of the Firefighters Relief and Retirement Fund. As we are all aware, there's a gap of unfunded liability that we have been working to address. Their presentation referenced the multiple steps that the City of Longview and the fire pension board have made to improve the status of the fund. Their final slide was a recommendation to issue a $45.6 million pension obligation bond. They also stated that this bond was a necessary first step for the long-term stability of the fund. Tonight's discussion will hopefully determine how the city council wishes to proceed. John Martin with Hilltop Securities is here. Thank you for coming, John, as well as Chris Settle, our bond counsel. Thank you both for attending. They're here to answer any questions related to that potential bond or action that would be required if you decide to move forward with the bond election. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McPhee. Council, discussion?
Can they speak to the performance of existing investments? No.
Yeah, I think Brian or Andy, one of you want to take that? I mean, I can answer somewhat. So we changed managers five years ago, and since that time, we've had a 10% return. So it is, you know, when they gave the presentation last time, it covered something like 20 years. So as we looked at making changes, one of those changes that I guess I forgot to mention in my list is that we changed managers and have done better as far as returns since that time. Sorry, go ahead.
That room is covered.
Sorry.
We hired Robert Harrell and Associates. We were dissatisfied with our investment management and some of the, their discipline in investing, and we hired Robert Harrell and Associates, who also does the Tyler Fire Department Relief and Retirement Fund, and we were very impressed with their style of management. They very diversified our portfolio, and just for instance, no one manager has more than 5% of the fund invested in their portfolio. And we have, we've had 10.18 average return over the last five years, and we're very pleased with what they've done for our fund. So, and that's actually two and a half more than our assumed rate of return. That's net of all fees, too. That's our total return.
That's after the fee to play.
Yes, sir.
One other thing that I learned this week that I didn't was that on our fixed income piece, which we have 13 million in, I think there's been conversations about that, that that's earning 7%, which is higher than what I knew.
Yes, it's actually quite a bit higher than what the average of, you know, 3% to 4% is. We're very pleased with where our investments are headed with Robert Harrell and Associates, and they're based out of Austin.
Thank you, sir. What are the discussion, council? I know there's certainly things to discuss. We've had plenty of time to review this.
I did have one question that kind of concerned me when they were talking about it last week is, and I realize, I guess it was the state that assumes this is the 7.5% return. And I was, at the time, I was kind of wondering if that was realistic, but now I hear you're getting 10% over the last five years, so I guess 7.5% is realistic. Do you guys consider that to be?
I think we'd probably ultimately lower that, too. So it's our actuarial assumption that the pension board approves. We moved it from eight to seven and a half, and of course, that increased our unfunded liability number. I do think ultimately the actuary will suggest we continue to go down to seven and 6.5 because, you know, I think that's probably the more responsible way to project that, even though our returns are hopefully going to continue to be higher. I do think that's something the board will continue to consider. It's what the Texas Pension Board recommends, I think, is 6.5.
Okay, I thought they said seven and a half, but...
And as inflation continues to rise, as it is in our nation, that we don't have control of that, unfortunately, that will also affect our rates of return, both positively and negatively, so we have to always look at that as well. I guess I'll ask this question. Council, anything else, anyone else before I ask a few questions?
Let me just come in. Well, I guess a question, Christian.
I'll do my best.
Okay, I'm sure you can answer it. Is the bond, have we done our due diligence? Is the bond the very last resort we have in order to infuse the fire pension to get us on the right track?
I have three questions regarding that.
Okay.
Yes, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, I...
Okay, I have three questions. Okay. My first question is this, and I'm assuming, I'm asking this to Hub International, but when they said if we call this bond at $46 million, it would be approximately two and a half cent tax increase. Is that correct?
That's based off bond. Our pro forma is that Hilltop Securities has provided to us. Yes, sir.
That is correct, sir. Is that right, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so two and a half cents is what it would affect our tax roll if we were to, if we were to pass this bond, right? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Rollin, I'm going to ask you this straight up. Can you do it for two?
I feel comfortable to say that we can sustain two cents with the P O B, and the reason I feel comfortable with that is we do have some other things that are affecting our budget projections as far as inflation and projections of what those costs would be, but I do think there needs, if we do issue that bond, I do think there needs to be some movement on the tax rate to accommodate that payment. But yes, I believe we can do it for two cents.
You think we can do it for two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I want you to say that, but if you say it, I'm going to hold you to it. You know that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I've been thinking about a few things, because Kristin, you struck a nerve with me last week, last meeting, when you asked, you were hoping they would give us another option besides the bond, and they didn't, because that obviously was what their, we paid them for their recommendation, and they gave us the recommendation they felt was the best recommendation for us, and that's what you pay for. Is their best, we didn't ask for a bunch of different scenarios. We said, give us your best recommendation. So I need to know this, because I'm uncomfortable not knowing, is there a way feasible that we could pay as we go and not do a bond election?
So yes, but not without consequences or things that you wouldn't accomplish as a result of a P O B. So I'll detail that a little bit. You get on a schedule to comply with the PRB boards, to be on a plan to meet your unfunded liabilities in 30 years. That's going to cost us about $1.6 million. Even if we don't do the P O B, that's what we're going to, that's what we're going to hit. It's going to be $1.6 million. If we're, if we didn't touch the tax rate, you are going to have to not only get that $1.6 million, but I just briefly referenced the $1.5 million if inflation stays at 7%. That's a $3.1 million on the pull on the budget before we even start budgeting. We do anticipate some of that inflation to be reflected in our city budgets. So if you talk about that, that would be reducing the funding of other services by $3 million. And for example, just for size of reference, that's, that would be 15% of fire department or 15% of the PD or half of the entire parks recreation budget. The other thing it doesn't do is it doesn't remove the year-to-year volatility of your long-term return on investment. So you'd be funding it on an annual basis. The payments would increase every year. It would continue to go up, and so when you had a spike of a short-term market drop, your payments would continue to go up. There's no cash infusion to stabilize the fund, which is now losing some money on a cash flow basis, and ultimately, it would result in a total that was more expensive to taxpayers in the long term.
Okay.
That's the point that I think resonates with me the most that I think they presented last time. I believe, if I understand it, now you just said 3 million. I had been thinking the actuary said, this was a little while ago now, we would have to, the city added 2 million annually from our budget. Now, you've added, I think, inflation and some other numbers in there.
Yes.
But then when they present what the bond payment would be if we had 45.6, it is less than 2 million. So financially, right, it makes sense for us and all the reasons you just talked about funding initially help. But just financially, it costs us less money per year.
That's correct.
Okay, my next scenario. Because with, I think it was HB1 or whatever, that House bill that passed two years ago that limited government, governing entities from having a tax increase over three and a half cents without voter approval.
That's correct.
That passed. It would limit us to a three and a half cent tax increase if we still decided to do that without having to go to the voters. Okay, so, and other entities have done tax increases this year. I mean, because of COVID and the things of budgeting and constraints and fees and whatnot, we didn't do a tax increase this year. We had a budget that was level with no tax increase. So if we were to say that we're going to raise our taxes three and a half cents, would that cover this bond proposal without, would it cover the Fire and Pension Fund without a bond?
So without entering the rollback rate, if we assume the next increase, it would be about one and a half cents for next year that we could go up. And then the year after, we could probably go up another one and a half percent if just for assumption purposes. But it would still not serve, fix the problems that I just identified with the pay-as-you-go. It has still got the same limitations of the pay-as-you-go option.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't stabilize the fund.
That's correct.
And the bond is the only issue that we, only option we had that stabilizes the fund and long-term will cost us less than either a three and a half cent tax increase or the pay-as-you-go method. Is that, is that my understanding?
Yes, sir.
I seem to make sure I was good with that because I had a little heartburn about that last time.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The group that was here last, at our last meeting, they recommended the bond. But they do not have any, they do not make any money off of us if we do a bond. They're, all they're doing is making recommendations. They're not, they don't make any kind of, it's not to their benefit if we do a bond. Is that correct?
In fact, that is correct. That is correct.
No, did that, did that answer?
It did.
Okay, those are things that were concerning me. Who, Tim?
There's a, I think as of yesterday, there are 72 pensions in Texas that have problems either greater than ours or, or under ours. And this was mandated, correct, by the state legislature?
A portion of the solution, yes, sir.
Okay, and then the state legislature gave this authority to the pension review board, as I understand it. And, but in that act, I don't see any enforcement. In other words, if we don't comply by, is it 2025?
Yes.
If we don't comply and 71 other municipalities in Texas don't comply, then is the state gonna just say, what do we do?
I don't know the answer to that. Either of you know? We don't know.
But, but, but...
I mean, that's correct.
We can't not comply. We can't not do something. We have to have some plan in place that eliminates this problem within the next three years, correct?
Yes, it needs to get us on schedule. I would tell you that most of the time the legislature creates a review board, it's in advance to get people to do something that they should be doing. And then when it doesn't happen, usually that's not the last piece of legislation that follows.
I know what you're saying, Tim, but I don't think we have an option to sit on our hands and say, let's see what happens.
Well, I guess the, the point, Mayor, would be that I kind of like the pay-as-you-go plan and granted that's still a thing, but I foresee some additional legislation coming, okay? Whether the state allocates some of the CARES money or whatever may happen, that we should be investigating. Can we use any of the CARES money to...
No, that's expressly prohibited from the CARES funds.
Cannot, cannot do that.
And then can you use the, one other thing I've noticed, and I'm just, you know, I'm not, I just wanted to have this discussion. We have a benchmark on our sales tax revenue, which the budget runs, and what our property tax revenue is. Okay, in other words, y'all budget is based on our property values coming in at boom, this collection rate. So if our property taxes are moving up and, and we're getting the sales tax numbers on a positive matter, could we not earmark that money, Mayor, to the pension?
I think we, I don't know if we can or not, Tim. I'm not, I'm wrong if you answer that question, but here's the thing. There's no guarantees there. And, and if we don't have a guarantee, then we're not solving the problem. And if we don't solve the problem, then the problem's going to compound like it has. And, and there's no guarantee that we, if we do the bond...
But didn't they say that?
That it's going to solve our problem. It's, it's a pretty good bet. But we thought we had a pretty good bet four years ago when they told us the four-step plan. We went through over four years and that didn't solve our problem.
Yes, sir.
But now, now, but back then, we weren't mandated by state to do anything else. Now we are. And so I'm not, I don't, I'm not up here as expert on any stretch form of management. I'm ignorant on this thing, this stuff. But I'm learning a lot as we've had a zillion discussions about this. And that's why I wanted to know if we could pay as you go and, and be okay. But I think if we do, in my opinion, which is one of seven, it's just an opinion, I think we're once again risking taxpayer dollars when we have been told it's gonna cost us more if we do that, no matter how you slice it.
Yes, sir.
And if it's gonna cost us more, I'm not in favor of that personally because I want to, I want to limit as much as we can to the taxpayer as possible. But once again, there's no guarantee, no matter what we do, that we're gonna solve the problem. But we have to approach it in an intellectual and educated fashion, which is what we've done with, with, you know, Hub International. And then we have to take that information and process it, and then we have to make a decision. And so I, I don't, I don't have the answer. I don't. I, I don't. That's why I've asked so many questions. They hate me this week. I have called Roland at nine o'clock at night and at six in the morning and said, you know, I just couldn't sleep last night. Here's my problem. Tell me how to fix this. And there just isn't an easy fix. I mean, money doesn't grow on trees. And, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be an expense no matter how we do it. But it's our responsibility to do something.
Oh, yeah.
And so we have to do something one way or the other as a council. So that's the prerogative we, we face tonight. And if we, if we decide we want to call a bond election, we will have to have a special meeting next week to do that. Or we have to do it by the 18th of February. So we'll have to have a special meeting between now and the 18th of February to be able to get it on the timeline for the May 7th election. And that's, that's our responsibility to do one way or the other. If we fail to call a bond election...
These dates.
Sir?
That's all of these dates.
Yes, sir. That's what that is. If we fail to call a bond election, then we have just now taken it upon ourselves to pay as you go or raise taxes three and a half cents or do some other alternative than what we've been presented by Hub International.
What is, Roland, or John, could you speak to what the bond payment would be? If we did the 45.6 we're talking about, what would the bond payment be for us? Because we're saying it would be lower, but what would it actually?
It's, it's about 1.6 million, I believe.
Sorry.
Is that right? What is it, Angela?
I have a quick question. What would happen if we proposed a bond and it didn't pass? We would be back at square one?
Then we have to either pay as you go or voluntarily or mandatorily raise taxes to the point we can, which is three and a half cents without a bond, without an election from the City of Longview citizens. That would then fall back on our laps. So one way or the other, it's fallen right here.
Definitely.
One way or the other. I'm sorry, John, please.
Mayor, somebody asked a question. What the bond payment was?
That was me.
Okay. The, we're estimating based on current market conditions and using the interest rate of 3.2% of just under $2.7 million a year. Now, that is before the 7% application from payroll, right? That, the split that you all are doing. So at the end of the day, that fits into, you know, after you've done that and without any adjustments for inflation, property tax growth and those type of things, you're at about a million five or so, right, right in that ballpark area.
So that's the bond payment minus what we continue contributing that we're already spending.
Right, and you've got to remember one thing that's, that's brought up that, that, that one of the nice things about bonds is, is they would have a call feature on them, that we could call those bonds in. So if, if we get all, you know, cash rich somehow and, and we've got money in the bank and, and this thing is overstabilized, you can call these bonds. You know, after a period of time, after nine to 10 years, no problem. So you're not, you're not gonna live with it for 25 years. You don't have to.
Right.
And it's fixed rate.
So you, do you think you can get a fixed 3.2% then?
Well, I could the other day. So I don't know where we'd be today. Tax, taxable rates, short-term rates, inflation, the, I mean, Consumer Price Index was released this morning and the markets went insane. So I don't know if that's a blip for today or if we're gonna see that when, when we sell bonds. It's, the markets are very volatile right now. So I'm just giving you kind of current rates when we ran these numbers last week.
So how much do you know off the top of your head, how much 1% up would make on that? If, let's say it went to 4.2%?
It'd probably be upwards of a half million dollars a year.
What, Roland, do you know how much is the 19% annually? What is that that we're contributing now?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. Angela knows that.
I was thinking it was two, maybe a little bit less. Two, seven is what we're contributing currently.
We should point out, too, in terms of the, the tax rate that we're pushing around here of about two and a half cents, right? That, that is based on very conservative, while we're using current market interest rates, we're using very, very conservative tax, net taxable values here. So only assuming 1.75% growth in your tax base. So that's, and that's well below where Longview is seeing, and we know property values are going like this right now. So it's a pretty conservative estimate.
I'm comfortable with your two cents.
Yes, sir.
I am too.
Very comfortable with your two cents. Okay, let me ask you another question, John, while you're there. And I don't, like, this kind of show I'm ignorant I am about bonds, but I'm, I have to ask the question. Say we call the election and the election passes in May, okay? But what if interest rates are just horrible? Do we have to purchase the bonds at any certain timeframe? Or can we wait until we have a good day and purchase them?
No, it's, it's voter authorization that says you are authorized to sell those bonds. It doesn't say you must.
So we could, we could, if it was just a horrible time, we could wait, say, a month before we sold them and see what happened?
Right. You can phase them out. You could, you could, you know, do them in tranches if you wanted to.
But if we got a really good day, it was a good rate, we could buy them all or, you know, I mean, I just don't, I just don't know, nobody knows what it's gonna be like in May. I mean, none of us can sit here. We didn't know what it was gonna be like two years ago in March either, you know? None of us know these things. But we have to at least go with predictions or trends. And so, okay, that answered my question. Thank you, sir. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I just, I just need to know those kinds of things.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's a big crystal ball.
John, one other thing.
Yes, sir.
If, let's say, in Tim's idea, the state says, well, you know, you guys are all, everybody's in a bind. We're, we've got a bunch of money. We're gonna give you a chunk of cash to help fund this thing. We could use that to pay off the bond.
I don't see any reason, and Chris Settle here, your bond counsel, is here with McCall, Parker, and Horton, but I don't see any reason why you couldn't take that money and set up and ask Crow to call the bonds when you're eligible for redemption. Fair?
Yeah. We could earmark it when we are eligible.
Right.
It'll continue to grow as the, whatever rate the bond's growing at, it'll grow just the same, so we wouldn't lose anything.
That's right.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
That's a good point.
Yes, sir.
The tendency, I guess, is what you mentioned is if we choose to not go with the bond and we go with the pay-as-you-go, we also risk ourselves for possibly getting into...
And, and I think it's, I think it's, that's an important point. And, and again, this is counsel's decision. I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just here for information. But I will tell you that this is a little bit different, you know? Bringing an issue for a tax increase to fund something, we normally do that and have done that in the past where we don't have the liability yet. The, the reality is, we have that liability. There's just not a plan to address it. And so I think that's a little bit different of an issue that we have with this pension obligation.
Agreed.
I'd like to summarize, and somebody correct me if I do it incorrectly. So right now, we're contributing 19% to the fund annually. That's 2.7 million. If we did pay as we go, we'd have to be committing an additional 2 to 3 million annually. Is that fair?
Eleven percent, that's...
Was that calculated?
About another, about, about one and a half.
1.5.
Okay.
Right.
We'd have to come up with, out of...
Out of the, out of the current actuarial study from Foster and Foster to get on the 30-year payment plan. That does not accomplish the same things that a cash infusion does.
Right.
But yes.
But then we come up with that out of extra funds or we come up with that by council raising property taxes without getting voter approval is what you were mentioning. It's an option, just as an option, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know else. We, we don't have any way to raise, we, we don't control, we do not control your property values. We do not control what the Great County Patrol District does. So we do not control that. So therefore, we're at the mercy of them. So if property values don't go up, we don't profit from that. I don't mean profit, but we get more money if they go up. I mean, that's how the city makes its money. But the only way we can add money to our general fund is to raise property values, raise taxes. That's all we can do.
Okay, so our decision...
Or we can cut back. I mean, we can, obviously, if we cut back, it's the same as, we can cut services. We can start cutting your street budgets and your police and fire budgets and your parks budget. We can, we can cut things if we chose to do it that way.
But to the tune of finding 3 million every year for now on?
For eternity.
Right. Or if you looked at the bond payment, because you reduce it by the 7%, we continue to contribute, so that comes from, from the city's funds, then 1.5 would be the bond payment, what we'd expect it to be.
That's correct.
So I mean, the numbers make sense to look at the bond.
If it didn't make sense, we spent a lot of money on, on a study that people know more than we know and we tell them, we don't know what they're doing. I mean, that's basically what it amounts to. And I'm not, I'm not willing to do that. But I needed clarification as to why we don't want to do that. And I appreciate you going through all the hoops that I've asked you to go through, Roland, because I, I just had to have that in my own mind, knowing that we've, we've, we have looked at every option. And we have to now determine what's the best option for our community.
I think it's very important that we put it to voters. So that's very important.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's like in times like this, you know, I think it's great that we all realize that we're working for the citizens. And their input and their opinion on important things like this are very important. And maybe there's ways we get that input without it actually having to go to a vote itself, but that's the ultimate way of getting their input.
I agree. Yes, sir.
Mayor, just one more, what if? Because since we've had these discussions, as you well know, we've seen backend numbers from, I mean, all over the board. You know, as far as a situation where we could put in a few million and shore it up for the short term. And I think the worst number I've ever seen out of the thing was it was like 170 million upside down. I guess I'm having a hard time focusing on Hub versus the pension board's actuarial or what. There's such a spread in those numbers.
It's, well, and he tried to explain that last time. Part of that is the interest rate reduces so far that they use, because it's a blended rate, and Angela could probably talk more intelligently about this than me, but then it's like 2%. So the actual unfunded is at 70, right? But then the way they make us calculate the Gatsby numbers, then we report...
Gatsby, that was one, yeah.
We report 170, but the actual dollar figure is 70.
That's our unfunded liability. And you can hear, everyone can spout off what they want and they can say untruths, but it doesn't make it true. You can say 170 or 190 or 300 all day long, but it still doesn't make it true. The unfunded liability is 70.1 something million dollars or...
Right around 70.
It's 70 million dollars. That's our unfunded liability. That's what we're trying to correct. Not any other number that you hear. That's the number we're trying to correct with this, with this bond.
But the 45 million just goes in that pot to help stabilize the 70? I mean, I don't understand it. If, if 70 is the number, then we don't need the other 25?
I, I would say that's why we hired the independent actuarial is the independent, the, the Fire Pension Actuarial. They said, there's 70 million dollar unfunded liability. You need to true that up. The actuarial guys that we hired get an independent view. They said, well, you can shore it up with less than that because I don't think you, 80% is basically where the 45.6 gets us. And that means you're off the radar for pension review boards. You've, you've met that need. So I think there's different...
And this has 30 years to rectify itself. 30 years. I mean, a lot, some of us may be here back then, but, but what we're doing, we're trying to do is put something in place now that in 30 years, it will have accomplished what we're trying to do, which is get us to at least 80% of our fund or more. Because we don't know. Just like John said, we may end up with extra cash and we can pay this thing off early and we don't know. We can keep our fingers crossed. But once again, there are factors that we, we will and can never control when it comes to a fund like this. We can never control the stock market. We never control elections. We can never control pandemics. We can never control wars. We, we don't have that ability. And those are things that make this go up and down. That's why the stock market does it every day. That's part of this life, unfortunately. But still leaves us with the fact, we have to make a decision. What we want to do as a council, and so...
That was my question. So this meeting, actually, according to these dates... So that was my question. So this meeting, actually, according to these dates, has to be made tonight?
Well, no, we have to, we'll have to, if, if, if the, if the perusal of the council is to call an election, we'll have to do that in a meeting, a special meeting next week.
Before the 18th of February.
Before the 18th.
Yeah, okay. So not necessarily...
No, we're, we're just coming to the agreement. Do we want to try to call a special meeting to have an action item that calls the election next week? That's, that's where we are right now. So I need council's opinion on if you want to call a special meeting next week to consider calling a bond election. That's what we have to do. So I'll just ask your opinion. I can ask opinions, can I, Jim?
You can decide, y'all can decide by vote as to when you want to have your next meeting, discuss that into, you know, what's going to be on the agenda.
Okay, so...
Before we do that...
Yes, ma'am. Anything.
Because I need to put it in simpler terms for me. So in a nutshell, we have a debt that we owe. There's no getting away from this. This is something we are obligated to do and have to do. We've done our due diligence, so the bond, proposed bond election would be the only way that we can address this issue head-on right now. So bringing it to the voters would be the, the thing to do. So is that, am I correct in saying that?
That's as simple as it can get, no?
Got it now, okay. I need, you just needed that understanding.
So, Mr. Carpenter, what is your, what is your opinion?
I think we, we meet and let the voters.
Ms. Noddy?
I concur. I think we should meet.
Mr. Wade?
I think we meet, and I think in that timeframe, we encourage the citizens to also get involved in this. And feel free to reach out and give us, especially me, your opinions, everyone in District 3, you know, your thoughts on how this should go. Yes, I do believe we should have a meeting.
Mrs. Zahara?
I agree.
Mr. Wright?
I do agree. The only thing I kind of feel like is that by putting it into a bond election, we're kind of, to a little bit of an extent, we're shirking our duties a little bit, and we're saying, we don't want to have to make the decision. We don't want to look like the bad guys. So let's let the citizens make the choice. But I think we need to do it all the same.
I, I, I absolutely understand your, your opinion, David. And I look at the, the backside of that and say, because we could call the election without asking the citizens. We could, we could do this without, but then, then I think we would receive worse criticism for not allowing them to be involved in a decision that affects their money and their future. So it's a double-edged sword, and I agree with you 100%. I don't know which is the easier sword to swallow, because it's not fun swallowing a sword either way. So I agree with you. Mr. Pertle?
What do we do in the meantime? Do we need to cash infuse this right now? Are we in trouble that, at that point right now?
I don't know the answer to that, but I know that our, our funds are doing well, and they're holding their own at this point in time. They just can't hold their own enough to make up the debt that we already have. That's, that's my understanding, but I don't know that.
If you remember from Hub International's projections, they said, if you do nothing and everything stays the same, you're going to run out of money in 20 years. So are we good for three months? We might be. But, I mean, the, the bottom line is, there needs to be a cash infusion. I'm not sure that six months or seven months, and I would defer to somebody that's a pension expert, I'm not one, but, you know, it's just a little bit longer go doing what we've been doing. So...
So how much are we, I've heard numbers, how much are we taking in versus what we've got going out every month in that pension?
There's, so for the year, last year, the, and I did, I did that, so I have the calendar year for 2021. That's all the information I got from, from the actuarial firm. The cash flow was 1 million in the hole, 1.08 million. So there's $44 million worth of assets roughly, so, but those are ramping up. So that's why they, the actuarial firm...
So are we losing, are we losing $100,000 a month? Or are we losing 200? I've heard both numbers.
From, from the numbers I was provided from the pension board, it was, it was 1.08 million is the cash we lost last year. Yes, sir.
For the year. So divide that by 12, so it's, that's 900, 90, $90,000 a month, roughly, if, if they're still doing the same as they were. They could be doing better, they could be doing worse. There's, once again, we don't...
Well, that's not factoring in cash in, cash out, is what...
Because we're still putting in, yeah.
Yeah. But then, that's not including that 10% that we got from the market.
It does not include the gains. That's just straight cash.
The fund actually increased from, yeah, during that time period. We have more money in the fund, even though the cash flow is losing that, based on what's going in and what's going out.
Thank you, Chris.
Just like social security.
That's, that's the number. I got 91 from Colby.
Yeah.
And from another independent deal. But then I heard 200, and I'm going, where are we getting the 200 then? Is that the projection?
You said it in fact. I mean, we got numbers all over.
You can hear all the numbers you want, but these, the numbers, the facts that we're dealing with are what we've talked about in this council. We, we can't make numbers up. We can't fudge them. If they are what they are, they're realistic, legitimate numbers. So, okay, so back to you, Mr. Pertle.
Yeah, we need to discuss it.
Okay. And I, and I agree as well. So our, our, what we will do is, we will get with you all tomorrow-ish, and find out when we can have a quorum and call a special meeting either next week or early, the following week, sometime between now and the 18th.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, do what?
Only next week.
Right, just next week.
Ooh, that means Valentine's Day is next week, and so is my wife's birthday. Oh, Lord have mercy. Yeah, we're in trouble. Okay, yeah, next week. It's going to be next week.
I'm going to need to know when you're not booked.
Yeah, it's going to be early next week. Okay, so that's our, that's our, our charge going forward. And I might mention one more thing, and I'm sure all of you all have read it, because you all received it, the, the email we got from Colby Beckham and the Fireman's Pension Board, on, on what they're willing to do if we call this bond election. And if you look at that, they are doing their part and more. And so if you have questions about this report, that this, this email that Colby sent out, please feel free, I'm sorry. Oh, please feel, I thought you were correcting me, Jim. You gave me a heart attack, man. When you raise your hand in the meeting, something's wrong. Okay, so please feel free to contact Colby if you have questions about this. But if you'll read that and understand it, which I didn't until it was explained to me better, they are, they are strapping their belts up for this, and I appreciate that. I think it's a show of good faith, and I think it's something that citizens would want to see and know, that they're willing to do on the behalf of themselves, for the citizens of Longview. So just keep that in mind. Jim?
We have a 72-hour posting rule, so, you know, as the days, like, early next week's probably out, like, like, generally, our meetings on Thursday, the latest we can post is Monday before 5:30, whenever we have the meeting.
I'll ask council tonight, before you leave, please get with, with Roland and tell him what days it'll, this'll be, and it shouldn't be a long meeting if we're just going to meet to call an election, unless you have more discussion that you want to discuss, which is perfectly fine. We'll discuss all that you want to, but it shouldn't be a long meeting. And so we might, can do it like at, at a noon time, where if everybody gets a lunch break or whatever. You all give Roland your, your opportunities and your openings for next week, before you leave tonight, if you would, and then we can assemble something by tomorrow and get something done quickly. How's that? Everyone okay with that? Very good. Thank you all for your input and your time on that important discussion we've had. We're not, out of the community interest, Mr. Carpenter?
I'm good.
Ms. Noddy?
Yes. Unities Honors Luncheon will be held Wednesday, February 16th, at ModCon at 11:30. The honorees are Natasha Howard and Jerry Gardner. I hear it's a sold-out event, so guys, this should be interesting, and we congratulate those that are receiving the award. Also, just as a reminder to all the men, Super Bowl is Sunday. Don't get in so much trouble that you forget what Monday is. That is the real day. So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
No kidding. Man, that just hit me like a ton of bricks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noddy. Mr. Wade?
Yes. Want to, once again, remind everyone, it's Black History Month. And in accordance with Black History Month, Foster Middle School choir singers is, will be at the Longview Public Library, February 17th, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and it's free to attend. And also, with Black History Month, the movie, it'll be a movie night at Longview Public Library, February 22nd, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and the movie will be Disney's Pixar Soul. And also, Journey of Stories. This started, actually, last week, February 5th. But this is held at the Gregg County Historical Museum, Tuesday through Friday, 10 to 4. Saturday's 10 to 2. Admissions, adults, $5. Senior citizens, $2. Students, $1. The free day is Friday, Saturday, February 26th. And you'll be able to meet a lot of the people that they're honoring during this time period. So happy Black History Month, everyone.
Thank you, Ray. Mrs. Zahara?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, this Saturday, it is this Saturday.
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday, the 19th. Kids, the kids' fishing derby will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I believe the Teague Park has been, or Teague Park Pond has been stocked with trout. So you can go catch trout and have a great dinner, maybe, if you catch your fish. And anyway, that's free to attend, and we'd love to have you.
Mr. Pertle?
Nothing for me.
Mr. McPhee?
No.
Okay. We do have a Poverty Workshop, Partners in Prevention in Longview Bridges Out of Poverty, will hold the annual Understanding the Struggle of Poverty workshop on Thursday, February 24th. Registration is $25. More information and a link to register can be found at longviewtexas.gov/pauperyworkshop. And the Mayor's Scholarship is about to roll out. So heads up to graduate seniors from Halsville, Longview, Pine Tree, and Spring Hill. That will be opening up soon for our annual scholarship, which will be due by April the 15th. So make sure to check longviewtexas.gov/scholarship for more information and a link to apply. And this year's topic, which I think is going to be really, 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 really interesting to read. I didn't tell you guys what the topic was. You can put a slide up there. Okay, here's your topic, students. What will it take for you to succeed in today's world? That's your topic. I can't wait to see what you think and what you write, because I'm going to be really excited to read it. So thank you all for attending. Thank you for attention. Thanks for always joining us on TV. And as of now, we are adjourned.